So I'll call the meeting to order if we can stand with the pledge, please. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, and welcome to the September eighth twenty twenty five business meeting of the Milford Board of Education. Can we have attendance, please, Ms. Fleming?
Yes.
Megan Doyle.
Here.
Scott Fermender.
Mr. Fermender is having car trouble. He's not sure if he'll get here.
Tracy Erby.
Here.
Tom Koba.
Here.
Justin Preet.
Here.
Adam Scobie.
Mr. Scobie is also having car trouble and not sure if they're not together.
Mike Smith.
Here.
Cindy Wolf Boynton.
Here.
And Susan Glennon.
Here.
We have seven members present.
Okay, very good. Uh, so this evening, we have our new student representatives to give a report to the board, and welcome. We appreciate your volunteering to do this for us once a month. Um, I spoke with them earlier, and we have Shay Pangu and Joey Kirzner from Foreign who agreed to go first, and next one will go off to me.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just to introduce ourselves, I'm Shay Pangu, and then this is my partner, Joey Kirzner. Um, it's truly an honor to be here with you all tonight, and we are so excited to be representing our school tonight and for the rest of the year. About a week and a half ago, we kicked off our twenty twenty five to twenty six school year, and days prior, our incoming freshman class had their orientation. They were grouped by their advisory classes and started by connecting with classmates through various activities. Then, they were given a tour of our building by our natural helpers and had the opportunity to ask any questions they had while they were in small groups. Also, prior to the first day, seniors had the chance to get a jumpstart on their college applications during our college boot camp. They went through a series of personalized stations and completed key sections of their common application. This allowed our seniors who are planning to attend college to feel more confident about their next steps towards the process. Earlier this afternoon, seniors got a chance to go outside for the senior social. There was an ice cream truck, and seniors got to bond and play yard games with each other at kickoff of the new year. On the first day of school, our senior girls woke up bright and early to participate in our annual senior sunrise. Each year, our girls sport matching senior girls T-shirts and head to Woodmont Beach right and early to watch the beautiful sunrise and catch up with friends. Our AP seminar classes started the year off with a fun introduction to some of the skills they'd be developing throughout the course. They were given a basket of items and told to categorize them into four groups. Then, they presented their groupings and had to defend the choices that they had made. Relative to that, AP psychology students started off the year with scenarios on why people did certain things. They gathered together and figured out each aspect of psychology for the respective scenario. Similarly, economic students also got a unique introduction to their course. They were asked a series of would you rather questions like, would you rather have a job that pays double the minimum wage that has no health benefits, or a job that pays minimum wage with full health, dental, and retirement benefits? After answering these tough questions, they tackled the larger question at hand, which was, what is economics?
Thank you, Shay. It's a pleasure to be with you all tonight, and uh, let's get it going. So journalism got to work right away, with advanced journalism both interviewing our band director, Mrs. Jessica Turner, and our athletic director, Mr. Jeff Rayusi, for articles that will soon be published on our website, Main Street Mirror, in intro to journalism students interviewing with their fellow classmates. In photography, students learned about the accessible parts of a camera and then designed and created their own mini cameras, which we'll be using to shoot next week in a miniature photo shoot. To start off our optimal wellness course, students explored anatomy and biomechanics through interactive three D models and explored the connections between muscles and movement. Our Spanish five conversation and culture course did a read and write story activity by contributing to one another's stories and then having a partner read it out loud while they simultaneously drew what they heard. Our introduction to allied health students kicked off the course with a very hands-on experience that demonstrated and deepened their understanding of how a disease is transmitted from person to person. Next week, school counseling will be hosting the first college visits of the school year in the school counseling center with colleges such as Salve Regina, Bryant, and Sacred Heart. They have been doing a great job equipping our students with as many resources for the next step after high school as they can. Beyond the classroom, students have been practicing hard with the fall sports season in full swing. Our girls' swim and dive team started their season with a ninety-three to seventy-six win against Waterford, and cross country had their first meet last Wednesday. Our very anticipated first home game for our foreign football team is this Friday versus Lead Year at seven P M. Make sure to be there. There will also be a club fair that will be held to inform all students of the different after-school activities and opportunities available to them. Ambassadors from each club will sit at a station and give anyone interested a quick spiel about what their respective club is all about. This will allow students to get even more involved with both the foreign and Milford community. Lastly, our TV studio course is working hard to create their new broadcast intro for the new school year. We cannot wait to see all the hard work they put into our Lion Pride News broadcast so it can be put back on the screens. I want to thank you all again for hosting us, and let's have a great school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Marcus Towns and Leila Alagna from Law. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. It's a pleasure to be with you once again for a new school year. Before we begin, please allow us to reintroduce ourselves. I'm Leila Alagna, and this is my partner, Marcus Towns. To start off the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year, the administration welcomed back the student body along with the class of twenty twenty nine, joining the J L H S family. Class meetings were held last Thursday and Friday to cover the operations of the building, support for all students, and the exciting events coming up soon. Classrooms have started building positive relationships and have begun diving deeper into the curriculum while supporting the individual needs of all students. We will also, we also now have an official date for homecoming on the books, which is October seventeenth. The math department has started this school year by building relationships with the new students, establishing norms and classroom expectations, planning lessons, and implementing their curriculum. In the English department, the teachers are getting to know their students as well as establishing class routines such as independent reading and reader's notebooks. The morning briefing aired its first episode of the year today, and The Advocate is already publishing stories online. Both can be followed on Twitter and Instagram, watched on YouTube, and read at J Law Advocate dot com. The advanced writing class is excited to run again this year with over twenty-five students, and they hope to finalize the details to publish a physical book as they have in the past years.
Thank you all for having us. In the world language department, students are getting involved in our Jonathan Law community through our Spanish, French, and Latin clubs, as well as the national honors societies in each language. These groups are starting to plan meetings, cultural events, and opportunities to serve the local and not-so-local communities. Our world language teachers are starting the year with lessons and activities that build community and get students both listening to and speaking in the target language from day one. In the media center, Ms. Monday is working on meeting with every freshman in English classes with Digital Escape Room, learn more about the TLC. Students then choose an independent reading book. So far, she has met with eight English classes and has three to go. The help desk is starting to get ready this year for the school year. This year, there are nine help desk students covering seven periods of the day. The TLC has already circulated a hundred twenty-three books in the first two weeks of school. Approximately a hundred grade twelve students participate in the annual school counseling senior boot camp on August twentieth. The two-hour sessions, both morning and afternoon, help prepare students for the start of the senior year. The sessions include an introduction to the common application, reviewing Naviance and its tools, and working with the English department on personal essay writing. The college and career center will begin hosting fall college visits this coming Monday, September fifteenth, and will continue to do so through the month of November. As of today, sixty colleges and universities will connect with juniors and seniors to discuss their post-high school research, planning, and application process. Now on to athletics. We're excited for another year of Jonathan Law athletics. This fall season is officially underway. Boys and girls soccer kicking off their openers last week. Our cross-country team has already competed in their first race recording a victory over Branford. The girls' swimming and diving team had a hard-fought meeting its hand and narrowly coming up short in a down-to-the-wire finish. Meanwhile, our volleyball team hosted Foreign in an early-season matchup but fell three to one. Looking ahead, our football team will open its season next Friday at Lyman Hall. We couldn't be more thrilled to see our campus filled with life, competition, and community spirit. Thank you all so much for having us, and we're excited for the year to come.
Thank you. Thank you again, students, for being with us tonight. Feel free to head out so you can get going with your evening activities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you later.
Do we have a public comment on the agenda at this point? Um, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to make a public comment this evening? Not all dispensed with reading the public comment statement. Okay, Chair's report. Um, our first order of business under the Chair's report is um, to inform you that, or remind you that, uh, we did get a resignation from Ms. Mahler effective August thirty-first, um, due to the restrictions of a new job that she's taken, and the, uh, her party, the Democrats in the fifth district, have selected Nicole Flowers to fill the rest of the term, and per city charter, we, the Board of Education, must vote on that appointment. So this evening, we'll take a motion to um, appoint Ms. Flowers, and she can be sworn in by the city clerk. Thank you for being here, Mr. Smith, and um, she can take her seat with us for the rest of the meeting. So I move that the Milford Board of Education appoint Nicole Flowers, fifth district member, to fill the unexpired term left by the resignation of Lauren Mahler. There's second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Preet. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Are you?
I am.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or sincerely affirm that you will faithfully execute and discharge your duties and responsibilities according to law as a member of the Board of Education for the City of Milford to the best of your ability, so hope you God or upon penalty of perjury.
I too.
Congratulations.
So welcome again, Nicole. All right. Um, so just another reminder for the board that our summer break is over and we return to our regular schedule of meetings, the second and fourth Mondays of the month, generally, barring any um, holidays. Um, committee of the whole meeting on September twenty-second will include an overview of the student standardized assessments given last spring. That's an annual report we get every, every year at this time. And again, as we do annually, starting in September, we will also begin the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget process, if you can believe it, with the first reading of the draft budget priorities and assumptions um, that we'll discuss and that the superintendent, Dr. Katia, will use as she formulates her budget um, for next year. Do we have any liaison reports? Yes. Um, Milford Prevention Council, um, they attended Law's Club Day to recruit for the youth committee um, on August twenty-sixth. Um, they participated in the Walk Milford Challenge yesterday. Uh, there was an annual Connecticut Prevention Summit in West Hartford. Youth Committee. So um, every year, they, they gather a bunch of um, interested um, students who um, want to work with the mission of the Milford Prevention Council. Um, on Thursday, the eleventh, they'll have their first meeting of the year. They've got a lot planned. Uh, mental health discussion with a local author, communication styles with Officer Welks, Booty Kids, Governor's Youth Prevention Summit, and they also want to do a cultural fest in the spring to highlight all of the wonderful cultures that make up Milford, and they'll be partnering with the DMBA, Downtown Milford Business Association, to do it during their Spring Fest. Um, the middle school open houses are on nine eighteen. Okay to Delay, which is a new group that's formed, um, is, will be joining them. Um, they're also, Okay to Delay is also going to attend a couple of elementary school open houses to provide resources to parents. Um, their annual meeting is nine twenty-four at Bridge House. They have Fall Narcan Trainings, virtual, beginning on nine twenty-three. They have PSA, PSAT Day at Law and Foreign on ten seven, and Foreign Club Day on ten one and ten three. Busy group. Thank you, Ms. Preet. Um, okay, any other liaison reports? Okay, seeing none, I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Katia for her superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon, and members of the Board of Education. Um, I'm happy to be kicking things off with an instructional highlight on music this evening. Uh, for those new to the board, or just as a refresher for this year, the purpose of an instructional highlight is, there are a few things, actually, uh, to bring you into our classrooms in a way. Uh, while it's impossible for board members or any of our community members to visit four hundred ninety-one learning spaces, an instructional highlight can help you understand what's happening in our rooms each and every day. It also brings you up to date on student work and the great work of our staff. Another purpose of an instructional highlight, it's to share with you how we are addressing needs across the district, because there are needs. There will always be needs, and this gives you, gives you an idea on how we are addressing those. A little bit of an instructional highlight also demonstrates what the quote-unquote "return on investment" is. You'll see that some of these instructional highlights will provide to you an update on budget investments that you have approved and our community has supported. And finally, a purpose of an instructional highlight may also be to um, give you a little prelude as to what you might be seeing in upcoming budget season. So this evening, we're happy to give you an update on how well things are going in the area of music and all the great celebrations that we get to experience in our classrooms throughout the district from pre-K through twelve. So I will be turning things over to Mr. Artieri and Dr. Paris this evening. Mr. Artieri?
Good evening, board members. Uh, thank you so much. This is a highlight we have not had in quite some time, so excited to have Dr. Paris join us this evening. And we are really uh, using tonight to share many of the opportunities that we continue to provide, uh, that we believe are instrumental for access to the visual and performing arts for our students. Um, in Dr. Paris's presentation this evening, we are also going to uh, make some connections for you to many of our core district frameworks, including our vision of the learner and our model for high-quality instruction. And then, as we do with all of the instructional highlights, we'll share with you a lot of the celebrations, as Dr. Katia mentioned, but then end our presentation with uh, some next steps, uh, that we're looking to pursue this year and into the future. So without further ado, I will turn the floor over to Dr. Paris to kick us off with our first uh, official instructional highlight of the year.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to talk with you about music here in Milford. Our music programs are nationally recognized and provide opportunities and pathways for every single student in Milford Public Schools, and I am so excited to share all of the amazing things happening in our music classrooms across the district. I want to start by saying that music is not extra. It is essential. Music is a place where high-quality instructional practices thrive, where students demonstrate attributes of our vision of the learner on a daily basis, where students build relationships with teachers over several years of instruction, and where every single student has a place. In our classrooms, students are learning more than the notes on a page. Students are gaining lifelong skills that support their growth as young adults and college and career-ready students. The skills developed through learning music are ones that students can take with them throughout their life despite their career path. These are the dispositions we outline in our vision of the learner, and they are also the skills that the World Economic Forum identifies as the top workforce, as the top ones workforces need today. Music gives students teamwork, experiences of teamwork, adaptability, and communication, the same skills employers consistently rank among the most valuable in the people they are hiring. Research has also found that students with sustained participation in the arts have significantly lower chronic absenteeism rates, up to fifty-one percent lower than non-art students. In addition to this, students who participate in the arts have a stronger connection to their school community and increased confidence and well-being. In Milford, we see this played out through high participation in our programs and in the sense of community and family that students repeat, report feeling in their music classrooms. So what does music look like in Milford Public Schools? Our curriculum was carefully developed using research-based practices for our youngest musicians. The way our students are learning music is the same way they learn how to read. Our youngest musicians begin by learning by ear, listening, echoing, and creating rhythms and melodies, just like they learn to speak before they learn to read. Once our musicians are comfortable conversing in music, we connect those sounds to notes and symbols. This makes music literacy feel natural and meaningful, just like learning a language. Our middle school students in our general music program, which has a modern band approach, allows students to learn the ukulele, the guitar, the keyboard, drum set, and bass. And each year, general music culminates with students forming bands, small bands to perform. Our high school general music program allows students to continue progressing on guitar, piano, or music technology, while focusing on individualized instruction based on student interests as well as their progress on the instrument. Students also have the opportunity to take music theory and American popular music, both of which have UConn E C E credit options. Finally, our high schools both offer peer-assisted music, which is a class that pairs students with our special education program and peers to create music together. If you ever have the opportunity to visit this class, you will be truly inspired by the collaboration and music our students work together to create. Our instrumental and choral music programs begin in grade four. All students in grade four and five participate in chorus, which begins with students learning how to sing in one and two parts and progresses through the middle school and high school to where they are singing in three- and four-part harmonies. Also beginning in grade four, students can elect to play a banter string instrument. The elementary program uses small group instruction during the school day and then begins to focus on ensemble skills. Middle and high school instrumental instruction continues with a scaffold ensemble approach that allows for individualized instruction and support all through high school. And for the first time this year, we held an instrument petting zoo, which allows students interested in joining the instrumental program the opportunity to try, try instruments before making their choice. These events were supported by our high school musicians and music educators and were highly successful. As of right now, we have a one hundred and seventy young musicians eager to learn to play an instrument, and we also got some giggles by calling it a zoo. Another part of our music program is, that we are proud of, is our music therapy pilot. This is one that not many people realize is happening. Now in its third year, this pilot was developed in partnership with our PPS department to provide music therapy services to our students at Orchard Hills and Meadowside in our ASD and adaptive programs. This program aims at providing an additional opportunity for students to engage in music in their day. It supports communication goals, boosts their social skills and peer interactions, and provides physical and sensory development for these students. The long-term goal of this program is for music therapy to eventually be a part of I E P goals for students in all schools at all levels. And this one is also in partnership. Um, the service is provided by Connecticut Music Therapy Services, LLC, and we have the same music therapist that works with our students for the last three years. So when we think about music in relation to H Q I, there are clear connections between the instructional practices in Milford Public Schools leaves them and what happens in a music classroom. When students are rehearsing in their ensembles, continual formative assessment must be utilized by the music educator to know what adjustments need to be made to continue to improve the performance. Student thinking is visible with our youngest instrumental students as they learn how to play an instrument, and it's sometimes audible in this case. If their fingers are not in the right spot, they immediately know because of the way it sounds. In this case, students are learning how to self-assess and adjust based on their performance. Goal-setting, reflection, and self-assessment are natural parts of the music-making process. Because of this, the music classroom is a highly student-centered environment that is based on the in-the-moment music that is happening. Our music classes are rigorous and a place where growth is measured not only in skills, but in creativity, collaboration, and perseverance. And for those of you that had the opportunity to visit H Q I Live this past summer, we showcased music in a collaborative classroom with STEM. Throughout the week, students engaged in music and STEM activities that encouraged them to find the answer to the question, what is sound? Students explored facets of sound production and sound transfer and gained a deeper understanding of the difference between sound and music. Elements of H Q I were abundant as students asked questions, explored hypotheses, and very clearly saw the connections between music and STEM. Our musicians have multiple ways that they can showcase their learning outside of the traditional concert schedule. Two years ago, we began the Elementary Honors Band that is a program for students in the elementary school that are excelling on their instrument. This provides an additional ensemble experience where students play more challenging music and more deeply develop their ensemble skills. Some of you may remember when our string and choir musicians electrified the Parsons Auditorium when we welcomed Mark Wood to work with our string students, and a year later, Laura Kaye to work with our vocalists. This is an experience that our students continue to talk about today and the impact it had on them. We are fortunate to have an ongoing partnership with Jay Rowe, a Milford native and musician, who brings naturally recognized jazz musicians to Parsons for two evenings of smooth jazz concerts every May. Our musicians are featured every year as the opening performers for these events. Finally, our musicians often visit other schools to perform throughout the year as a way of getting our younger musicians excited about our music. a way of getting our younger musicians excited about our music program. This is an opportunity for our students, our young students, to see the progression and that music is not just a one- or two-year commitment. These opportunities, in addition to many more, show that music in Milford goes beyond school walls, and for some students, it goes beyond our city. Students in middle school and high school have the opportunity to audition for the Connecticut Music Educators Association Southern Region Music Festival. At the high school level, students who participate in regionals have the opportunity to then audition for Allstate. This is the highest musical achievement a student can earn in the state of Connecticut, and annually, Milford Public Schools sends students to the state-level festival. For our Allstate musicians that want to take it a step further, they have the opportunity to then audition for national ensemble festivals through a variety of music organizations. In the past several years, Milford has supported students in the national level, at the national level, through the American Choral Directors Association Ensembles and the National Association for Music Education Ensembles. Our elementary musicians have the opportunity to participate in the Connecticut Music Educators Association Elementary Honors Ensembles for band, strings, and choir. This is for students in grades five and six, so it's end of elementary and some of our middle schools as well. This is a one-day festival that students attend based on nominations by their music educator. So what does it take for our students to make it to this level? Students must prepare several scales on their instrument, a solo specific to their instrument, and they must sight-read a short composition. The scales must be memorized; they may not read them from a page. And for the sight-reading, students are given a short piece and have one minute to review it before having to perform it for adjudicators. Having done this, I can tell you that this is a very stressful situation. However, with preparation that our music teachers help them with, students are highly successful. This is a highly competitive process, and students who are successful attend a two-day festival for regionals, and our Allstate students attend a four-day festival, which is part of our State Music Educators Conference in Hartford at the end of March or beginning of April. These ensembles are comparable to athletes or sports teams that make it to our state championships, as it is an opportunity for students to showcase the highest levels of musicianship and discipline on their instrument. Again, participation in these festivals represent the highest level of musical achievement a student can achieve in the state and take hours of practicing and preparation to reach this level. These opportunities and our student success at this level is possible thanks to the outstanding team of music educators we have supporting our students to get to this level. It starts with our youngest musicians and the foundation that our elementary music educators are creating, and then it's continually built on from there with our middle and high school music educators. Finally, Milford Public Schools has been designated Best Community for Music Education by the NAMM Foundation for the past five years. This year, we are one of 35 towns in the state to receive this honor, which is awarded following an extensive application process that includes questions about participation, curriculum, budget, facilities, community partnerships, and support. This award is given to communities that demonstrate outstanding support for music education, and we are proud to celebrate receiving this honor for five years running. So why does music matter? Music matters for so many reasons. It prepares students for careers in and outside of the arts. It's a place where there is a spot for everyone who wants to be a part of it. Our team of music educators support our students in finding their passion, whether it's in music or another field. But it also helps them to discover that there are careers beyond performance and education. There is this idea for any music student that you have two pathways you can go into. You can be an educator, or you can be a performer. But our music educators are helping our students to realize there are many careers outside of that. In fact, recent Milford graduates have gone on to major in music education, musical theater, the music industry, which is blowing up right now, it's huge, music business, music engineering, and music therapy. And our students have had the opportunity to be in a cappella groups at Yale and Fordham, to help with interning at the Hartford Healthcare Amphitheater, and then one of our former students recently assisted with production with the Country Music Awards, all because of the experience they have here in Milford Public Schools. So looking ahead, the goal is to continue to build on the strong foundation Milford already has for music education. We hope we can provide voice and choice in music at the middle school level, an initiative that was rolled back due to FTE reductions in last year's budget. We look forward to the opportunity to continue to increase our instrument inventory so that students no longer need to rent instruments to participate in our program, and instead we provide the instruments for each and every student who wants to play. We look forward to expanding performance opportunities for our students through the development of a district-wide arts festival while also increasing community-based performances with partner organizations. We look forward to increasing family and community engagement in music by developing resources for families so they can better support their musicians at home. And finally, we look forward to expanding the district honors ensembles, opportunities to include ensembles in both elementary and middle school for band, strings, and choir. In closing, I want to bring us back to the first slide. Music is essential. It is essential to the whole child development of our students. It is essential to those who come to school because music is what gives them purpose and joy. And it is essential because in music, every student has a role. There is no bench in music. In our concerts, every musician plays an indispensable part. In our marching band, every student has a spot on the field. In our flyers, every voice matters. There are no substitutes waiting on the sideline to step in. Every single student is a part of the final product. Just like math and literacy, we are building a system of music education that prepares students not only as musicians but as leaders, creators, and citizens. Music teaches them to listen, to collaborate, and to contribute. Our musicians are leaders inside and outside of the music classroom, and they note that the skills they learn in music are what made them leaders. It is also why we can proudly say, "Music is not just a part of our schools, it is part of who we are as a district and will continue to shape the future we are building for our students." Now, I'm excited to let you hear from our students and the impact music has had on them.
My favorite thing about class is getting to have such a good music teacher and being able to learning kids on the instruments.
I enjoy going to practice and learning a new song every day.
Being in the instrument was honestly less about the music and more about the community. It gave me something so much, like something so much bigger than myself. I was able to find people, like meeting my best friends, like people that helped me become the person that I am, like that gave me so much leadership that turned me into the leader that I am today.
I like all different genres and songs, and I like all the songs I can play on violin.
What I like about chorus is that working with a group is really fun for me. I really love singing, and our teacher and our music program makes everybody feel so special.
It's made a very positive impact on my life. Ever since I was young, I've always admired music, and even now, I still want to play music one day. Every day I have school, I look forward to the times where I can come with my fellow orchestra members and play together. There's something that's so cool to me about making sounds and everyone else's, and just all sounds good together.
I like playing guitar because I like learning new songs and playing with my people. I like music here because it's a nation and I like to play music with my friends.
To be honest, my favorite thing about the choir is the community that we have together. It's really not even a class to us, it's a family, and that's something like a mom that you never get to give away, and you always get so many new opportunities, like all over the state to do like different things, sing with other people who also love and enjoy singing. It's a nice way to de-stress myself, and it really just makes my day better after we're done singing and everything.
I look forward to being able to play in bands. I love being around that, and just being able to use my instruments and sing and feel safe while doing it.
Something I really, really love about the choir is with the songs we're doing stuff, it's really a way to express how we're feeling, and maybe it's not exactly the lyrics that we speak with, but it's the way we perform, it's the way we work with each other that really just makes me grow as a person, understand how I want to perform. Really, when coming here, I mean, I've been doing music for a very long time, but coming here was really just a sense of community and like really finding a place where I belong because like going from middle school to high school was a big transition, and having the choir here was something to make myself a lot more comfortable and like want to come to school and like talk to other people and everything.
I enjoy getting my life because it's my passion, and I feel happy and confident whenever I'm in a show. Music shows kids and any person to follow their dreams, whatever they want to be, and music just helps me and with other people in the world find who they are inside.
And I thank our students. They're a good way to wrap up, so I want to thank you for allowing me to be here, and I will take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Paris. Questions? Miss Erby?
Thank you for the presentation. You mentioned expanding the honors ensembles. I figure that's not necessarily the first thing you want to do, but what would it take to do that?
The opportunity for a student, we would need teachers to be willing to rehearse outside of the day. So the way our elementary one works now, we have the elementary band. Right now, the teachers have partnered together, the two elementary band teachers have partnered together, and the students rehearse on Monday nights. They'll be, not tonight because we just started, but very soon, they'll be rehearsing on a Monday night, and they perform two concerts a year, so it's just the outside-of-school commitment. And then, we have the students in our programs, it's just a matter of the personnel at this point.
Okay. Would there be additional dollars needed to compensate the teachers, additional teachers too, right?
Likely, yes.
Other questions? Mr. Smith?
The dollars, it's probably like a stipend rather than an FTE, right?
Yes. It'd be, yeah, it'd be a stipend on top of, if it's the way it is now, it'd be a stipend on top of the...
Similar like coaches and things like that.
Yes. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the students. That was fantastic.
I have to thank Emily for that, she did a great job.
I was wondering who did the editing.
It was not me.
Thank you. Ms. Will Boynton?
Thank you, that was an excellent presentation. I'm very positive, too. It's a nice way to start things off. I was wondering if you could talk about, just a little bit about the different grade levels, and, you know, is everyone who's able to participate or wants to participate able to participate, and does in any way our current situation tie into this next step for instrument access and equity?
So you're asking specifically about instruments, correct?
I guess so, yeah.
So with all of that, yes, anyone, and I said this multiple times last week when we had our instrument petting zoos, that if there is a child in Milford Public Schools that wants, it's funny, right, the petting zoo?
My daughter went last week. She...
Oh, she must have loved it.
Yes.
But if there is a child in Milford Public Schools that wants to play an instrument, we will make sure they can play it. There are limitations, however, I'm working thankfully with Ms. Artieri and Dr. Kataya that if a child says, "I want to play this instrument," and we don't have that to give them, we're working on creative solutions so that if you really want to play the flute and we don't have any more flutes, we will find one for you to play. Right now, we have that as a barrier, but long-term, with the, what I hope to be a purchase of an inventory that just allows all of our students, and it levels the playing field really, because right now, there's the kids that can rent the high-quality instruments, and then there's the kids that can't, right? And we're helping the kids that can't, but if we just level the playing field, there's no discomfort for a family that comes and says, "I need, I can't afford the instrument. I can't afford for my child to be a part of this," and that takes that out of it. So many districts have adopted this approach, and it's allowed them to just say, "Here's your instrument, play it, and we'll take care of the other aspects of it." Does that answer your question?
It does. Are we, I mean, I'm not looking for exact, it would be unfair to ask for exact numbers, but, you know, what are we talking about, like the number of kids who want to play who may not be able to?
So right now, every child that wants to play does and can. It's a matter of the people that aren't speaking up, right? So are there families out there that came to the instrument night but don't want to ask to borrow an instrument? Are there families that didn't go to the instrument night because they didn't think they could buy the instrument? So this would get rid of that worry for them. But yes, we make sure that if a child or a parent comes to me and says, "So-and-so wants to play an instrument," I will make it happen.
To build on that, you mentioned the middle school voice and choice had to be rolled back because of FTE reductions, and my recollection is maybe not, I don't remember if it was this budget cycle or the previous budget cycle, we also had to roll back some of the instrument acquisition. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And at that point, you were, that was the point at which you wanted to start, creating our own inventory. I noticed the, one of the kids, she was in front, it looked like she was, there was a lot of cages behind her, which is where you keep all the instruments, correct? I mean, I saw that, and I mean, it's very, it's very, it looked very modern, and, you know, we're taking good care of the instruments that we...
We are.
Because they're locked up, so that they can't walk away. Mr. Smith?
So curious, and I would, without knowing the numbers, but I think there's probably a case to be made that inventory makes sense. I mean, I, as a product of Milford Public Schools, right, and I did percussion for a few years before I realized that I have an appreciation for music but not the talents to do it, to make it myself, and so was able to sell off the drum set, but I think my sister in a similar vein, like, I'm pretty sure she still has the flute that she purchased in like elementary school that has gone unused for decades, and so I think there's probably a way to make it, you have to do the math, but there's something to be said about either buybacks or other stuff too to put in the inventory, because I know...
It's expensive, though.
Oh, yeah, but it's also expensive for families but also expensive for districts, and there's underutilization for sure.
There is, and, you know, as I shared with families last week, the idea of, if you don't mind, you know, I have, I always say this, you know, I'm this family and I have my sister's flute at home. Can my child use that? And I often advise against it because it's been sitting for a while, and often, with the way it costs now to really re-haul an instrument, to refurbish an instrument, to playing ability for students, you're better off renting the instrument, because the rental fees, I will say, are reasonable. However, for some families, that forty, fifty, sixty dollars a month is too much, especially when you have two, three children or more. But yes, there are definitely creative solutions we can find to obtain instruments, and then there also, we can work with our, we've got some great partners in our vendors to support the acquisition of those instruments.
Welcome. Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. I think this program also speaks to long-term building, because this was, as a graduate, also Milford Public Schools, we did not have this when I grew up. There was a piano in a room with a scissor, and that was about it. And we watched lots of Disney music shows. As a non-musical person, I appreciated it. Same vein, did we ever get that drum line that foreign?
Oh, yeah, we did, yes.
So that's done, but then where is the Jonathan Law status?
Jonathan Law had a newer drum line as it was, so they did not need it, and I would anticipate, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but a drum line will last for quite some time. So that's the other thing to consider in this, is that when we purchase an instrument new and we follow the regular upkeep that is anticipated, and we do that, we do, budgetarily, we are able to support the upkeep of the instruments, an instrument will last a while. Drum lines, we can replace the heads on them very easily, our teachers know how to do that, so there is maintenance, but it will last ten, fifteen, twenty years.
And then, because I'm just thinking about the two bands at the two high schools, are those instruments predominantly school-owned instruments? Are those, because we do have some of the larger instruments specifically that we are keeping as inventories because no one wants to rank certain ones on the bus.
Right, so that's a great point, too, is that across all of our buildings, the larger instruments, we often have one that we provide to the students. So when we look at our string players, that... So when we look at our string players, that right now are thinking about playing the cello, our little fourth graders that want to play the cello when it's huge giant for them. We're not expecting them to carry it back and forth to school. So we do provide, they keep their rented instrument at home and we provide one in school that multiple students use throughout the day. When it comes to those larger instruments, especially as we get to the high school, similar thing. We have the full-size basses, the full-size cellos, and then we have the Barry sax, the sousaphone. There's not a child in Milford that brings a sousaphone home to practice and march around their backyard, right? But yes, the inventory as we get into the high school, both high schools are more of the larger instruments because those are the step up for our students. So a child doesn't get to playing the Barry saxophone by starting in in fourth grade. They start on a clarinet or an alto saxophone or even another instrument. And then eventually they switch over to play the tenor or the Barry. Same thing with getting to the sousaphone, marching in our two high schools. They started on a different instrument and eventually got there, but we provided at that point.
So we have a lot of schools, we have the elementary, three middle school and two high school, I don't need to tell you that. But how is this program duplicated across schools in terms of equipment needs and things like that?
So it's great because we have a central inventory that we've worked hard to keep up to date. So as an example, right now, as we're matching students who might need an instrument in our elementary school with an instrument, it's a matter of, "Hey, Mr. Giancola, do you have this instrument for me? I don't have it in my inventory, but do you have it over at this school?" Yes, we do, we're going to ship it over and then we're going to mark that so-and-so. Amy Paris has it at Live Oak School. So we keep track of all that and we do, because it is, they're district instruments, we do allow them to go back and forth.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Questions? Yes, Ms. Flowers?
The music therapy pilot program, that sounds wonderful. I'm just curious, I know the hope is to add it to IEP goals. I'm just curious like what that path might look like?
So this is something I've worked with, with our partners. And there is, I believe it's Southern, Southern has started a music therapy program. One of our, one of our state universities, it might be Eastern, I apologize. But what it would take to make it full-time is to have a board-certified music therapist on our staff. Could we do it through a partner with music education consultants? Yes, we can, and work with PPS on that. But really, we would probably, considering the size of our district, utilize a full-time music therapist. And the benefit of us going in the route of saying, "Let's have a full-time music therapist on staff", is that they can service all of our students based and identified with the IEP goals. But on top of that, as music therapy, like I showed you, we have students that have gone into music therapy from Milford Public Schools. If we have a board-certified music therapist, we can actually support the universities that are preparing music therapists. So we can then have music therapy interns who are coming to Milford Public Schools and learning how to be music therapists, just like we have student teachers. So long-term, it is a financial impact and you know, in year three of this, I think this is at the point where Tom and I will start to have conversations about what can this look like and where do we start with the IEP goals? Because some parents have asked for that. The beginning of this pilot started because I was hearing that we had parents saying, "I think my child will love music therapy." And again, with the PPS partnership, it allowed us to try it and it has been highly successful. The students, the parents, the teachers really enjoy it. And our music teachers in those two schools have noticed a difference when those students then come to music class because they're understanding the routine of the music class and increased social, better social behaviors, increased participation in music. So you know, the benefits are there, it's just a matter of that financial piece of the board-certified therapist.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's interesting because when I was preparing for careers, art therapy was...
That is awesome.
But this almost seems, I mean, art therapy, it's different, you know? And this is more interactive, certainly.
Very attractive.
So that's an interesting concept and I'm glad that we're considering it. You mentioned that you have 170 students looking to play an instrument this year.
And counting.
So how does that compare to recent past? I mean, how, is that a big increase or?
I anticipated this question tonight because I was throwing the number in there. We're about where we normally are, students have until Thursday to sign up. And I think one of the benefits of the zoo we had last week was that it gave some students and families things to think about and we provided them resources. So we had several students who came and they said, "Oh, I really wanted to play this." And then they tried two other instruments, now they're between those two instruments. And so on our instrument website, we have videos so that students can go in with their families and look at the instruments and listen to them. So I anticipate we'll land somewhere between 180 and 190, which is right where we typically are. We typically have in fourth grade a low 50 to 60% participation across all of the fourth grade.
Any other questions? I appreciate your saying that music, but I would say the arts are essential.
Absolutely.
And not extra, I fully stand behind that. And I support, I think we as a board have strongly supported the financial investments that we've made at all levels of the arts. You mentioned the festivals and the nationals, so that includes a financial, involves a financial investment as well.
Yes.
So I want to thank my fellow board members for continuing to support that, those financial investments. But I also want to thank you, Dr. Paris, for the work that you do in Milford Public Schools because you really, I know it's a passion of yours and you've really brought the music program and the arts programs in general a long way since in your time with us. And really highlighting the fact that it truly is essential. And something that we, you know, it's disappointing when you have to curtail because of budget constraints, but you know, I think as a board we'll work hard to keep moving it forward.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Paris.
Thank you.
Also want to underscore, Ms. Glennon, the great value and contributions that you have brought to our district. So thank you, Dr. Paris, for helping to bring, lift the capacity of our teachers, put in front of our kids so many great opportunities that were not here. Am I doing the math six years ago?
Yes, this is your seven.
Yep.
Yep.
Since you have arrived and bringing great coherence across the 14 schools.
My pleasure.
And if I may, that's the benefit of leadership right here, right in front of you, that leaders do matter. Yes. Dr. Paris, you are, is a nationally recognized music educator, so I think we are very lucky to have her.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now go home and do your homework, young lady.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Glennon, I'll be moving to the annual back-to-school report at this time?
Yes.
It's hard to follow up that presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is the annual back-to-school report and like to share with you how things have kicked off and how we've come off of a great summer. I know that Dr., oh, almost, Mr. Otteary, we're getting closer and closer, sorry. Foreshadowing of what's going to happen in a couple of months. Mr. Otteary gave you an update on the professional learning and all the work over the summer, but I'll underscore it with some more specificity this evening as well. So starting off in the Department of Teaching and Learning, particularly in the area of STEM, we are kicking the year off with a all-new K-5 update to mathematics, scope and sequence documents. We know, actually, next time we are here in front of you on September 22nd, we'll be providing you with an update on our student achievement results. Based on that, we conducted an update to our scope and sequence based on student needs, the achievement that came back in those results. We also developed new math assessments and those will be rolled out this year. And we have all-new K-5 science implementation guides for the STEM labs. In 612, we developed a new mathematics and action curriculum. And we also developed an applied mathematics at the secondary level. We conducted a course training and development for a new Southern Connecticut State University Math for Liberal Arts Course. And we have also infused more project-based experiences into the middle school enrichment curriculum. And then when it comes to career and tech ed, we developed curriculum guides for the Southern Connecticut, once again, State University Business Law and Ethics Course. So I'll just pause here and just want to underscore that when this board is approving curriculum development monies, these are some of the examples of what the impact on students looks like. New courses for kids, updating assessment calendars or actual assessment experiences, infusing project-based learning. So these are teachers coming together under the facilitation of a leader, putting together, revising or putting together new curriculum. So just wanted to use that as an example as I started off. In the area of humanities, we held our second Milford Public Schools Summer Literacy Institute. Also just a reminder that when we hold summer professional learning, it is by choice. So an advantage is that we get to offer it to anyone in our school district, we do compensate them. But the disadvantage is that it's by choice, not, you don't catch all teachers. So we held the Summer Literacy Institute for Teachers to Come back in June and it did focus on the science of reading. Some of the days focused on vocabulary comprehension and writing and some of the days focused on instructional coaching, specifically student-led instructional coaching. At the secondary level, we reviewed and revised English I and III curriculum and we developed writing experiences and assessments for English II. And we revised the course entitled Fairy Tales and Folklore at the high school. In social studies, we refined some of the high school civics curriculum, reworked the projects rubrics and essay prompts for world history, developed history through film implementation guides. Just reading through this, this doesn't, doesn't this want to make you go back to high school some of these cool courses, right? I know, Tom, you want to take the fairy tales and folklore.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. And we also, it is required that we send our teachers who teach AP for regular refresh training. So in the area of government and politics and the area of macroeconomics, we sent teachers to get recertified in those areas. In student development and wellness, we did work a lot this summer on our multi-tiered system of supports for our young people. Specifically, we worked on exit and entrance criteria for elementary students. For those of you who don't know, the MTSS system provides intervention services for our young people. And we held our sixth annual One Day for Day One at the Dixwell Community House in New Haven. And the theme was Support and Belonging for Students and Staff. I will tell you that we are going through a program review with One Day for Day One at this time. We're doing an internal audit of what it's costing us, number of attendees, sort of a return on investment analysis of this day. And want to just make sure that that is the best investment of our monies for our teachers. More to come on that in the future. And in the fine and performing arts, we completed revision of the general music curriculum maps for all of our elementary students. Summer opportunities, we do provide a summer program for our youngest learners all the way through high school. Particularly, we offer a federally mandated summer school program for students with special needs. We call it the Elementary Summer Adventure Program because we really try to make it fun and engaging for young people, although they are working on a lot of literacy and mathematics. At the middle school level, we hold a math and literacy camp. The middle school math program invites rising seventh and eighth graders to get extra support to accelerate their math skills. We had 28 students participate in that program. In middle school, we hold a literacy camp focusing on using read-aloud models to reinforce strong reading practices. And we had overall 15 students joining us for that two-week program. At the high school level, we are happy to say that we continue to offer a high school credit recovery program. It's for students who did not earn credit in subject-specific areas during the summer school, during the regular school year, pardon me. And we offered over 30 courses in areas such as English, math, social studies, science and oral language. And overall, 35 students enrolled in that program and that runs for five weeks. I will also highlight here that Mr. Otteary and his team did put a lot of work into developing a summer enrichment program, but that was one of the reductions that we sustained, decided to pull out because of the reduction. So it's our hopes that that will make the table, the budget table again and that we'll be able to report in the future that we're extending summer school opportunities to all students that may want to engage in enriching opportunity. And you have already gotten an update on the HQI Live Season Six that took place in July, focusing on belonging, consistency and coherence, as Mr. Otteary reported last month. So moving on to business and operations in the area of food services, we are implementing the Healthy Pro software for menu planning, production and My School menus for public view. I think Ms. Faustic gave you a little preview of that. Cool tool where parents can go in and actually search menus by nutritional information, particularly if there are some allergies or health concerns. The implementation of the My School menu allows families and school nurses and other interested parties to access timely menus and nutritional information. Additionally, in food service department, we provide the necessary professional learning. We put local on-your-tray farm-to-school professional development was offered to all school food service staff at Pumpkin Delight School this year. The regional farm-to-school coordinator from UConn presented on easy local food prep, techniques to offer a variety of local fruits, vegetables and herbs. And I know that Ms. Faustic shares that with you at her bi-annual updates. And we also reviewed, analyzed, selected and implemented the request for proposal for all food service, grocery, bread, frozen, refrigerated, milk, deli, paper and cleaning supplies. And a number of those vendors were selected for service to Milford Schools for the 25, 26 school year. So we've completed that and all of those vendors are onboard. In the area of transportation, we like to say, knock gunwood, that the transportation was started off very smoothly this year. We've had an average amount of requests regarding stop adjustments and we've already received 36 requests and applications for non-eligible bus riders. This board knows that the policy requires us to consider that and get back to families come October. Durham is also rolling out a new bus tracker app for families called Bus Zone. Families will be able to see the bus location whenever they need to and they can even set alerts for when the bus is nearby, reducing the possibility of kids missing their bus. Very important. And Durham has ordered stop-arm cameras for all of our buses and they should be delivered and installed by late November this year. In the area of facilities and maintenance, I'd have to add another 20 minutes to my review tonight if I were to read every single project that Pat Bradbury completed. But stay tuned, you'll get that update later this fall. I know it's one of your favorite presentations. But overall, I will tell you that we have tested and inspected fire alarms, fire sprinkler devices and systems. We've installed different playground mulch at different sites. This is one of his favorites, I know, Mr. Bradbury loves installing and taking out air conditioning units. We are up to 185 portable units to date. I say that kiddingly because it is not one of his favorite activities. We have installed and evaded VCT flooring. We've put in new ceilings, new LED lighting, paint. We've put in new drainage. We've cut back vegetation on property lines. We've completed and upgraded server closets. We've repaired and upgraded intercom systems. We've groomed the clay ball field. I'm going to need an explanation of that because it comes up often, grooming a clay ball field. That has been done at a number of our athletic fields. Electrical panels have been replaced. Large trees have been cut down, particularly those that may have been too close to buildings or have decayed and become unsafe. And we've repaired roof leaks. So there have been a number of maintenance and property upkeep projects that span all 14 buildings and you'll get a report from Mr. Bradbury with greater specificity sometime, I believe. It ended up in November, December this year. In the world of safety and security, we have conducted our annual required safety and security training with all staff. Trainings being done with all work groups, school safety and security-related courses offered by local, state and federal partners at no cost to the district are available for staff, security guards and school resource officers. We also provided a first responder resource training video to our police and fire departments to enhance their awareness of our protocols, our equipment and our technology. Active aggressor training. This past year and into this school year, we've collaborated with the Milford Police Department and conducted three trainings that will continue into this year. Our goal was and is to evaluate the current capabilities of the Milford Police Department and Milford Public Schools to provide timeless... to provide timely, critical information and resources. So in essence, this is an activity that puts to the test all of our protocols and systems. So we actually, on a day where there are no students and staff, conduct a simulation of whether, if there were to be an active aggressor in our schools. So Police Department, our team, we're all on alert, and we actually send in, it's usually Mr. Nielsen as the aggressive intruder, and the police conduct their protocols. We utilize our systems to see how that all comes together in a practice mode. He will give you more information about safety and security when he is before this board for his annual report in February. I'm happy to say that we have completed all hard investigative projects. That Pumpkin Delight has been finally completed. Remember, we started the school year off without that completed, but it is now completed, giving us 14 hard investigative entries to all of our schools. As you've already heard, we found it necessary to post signs at all of our schools that state no public access during school hours. It did become a problem during the school day, where there were members of the public accessing our playgrounds, our track, or ball fields during school day, oftentimes while our students were out there engaging in recess or our physical education activities. We have engaged in the process of replacing our outdated cameras. You know, through the budget process, this is an annual investment. It is just a cycle that we go through in replacing our cameras year after year. And we have migrated to a new mobile phone app version called Alert Aware. This is part of the Alertis Mass Notification System, and the new app has improvements in functionality. The Alertis program utilizes automated, pre-recorded visual and audio messages for students and staff regarding active campus-specific emergencies. So right here on the phone and our laptops, for anyone who is plugged in, if there were to be an emergency at this moment, you would probably hear everything that we own go off, and that would be sent, pushed immediately to any and all of our devices on staff members who have registered for it. In the world of pupil personnel services, you already met. We have our new director leading our team, Mr. Zenowitz, and he began in August. To build the district's vision for consistency and coherence, we gathered all the district-wide pupil personnel service staff on August 25. That's really a rarity, that we're able to bring all of our staff together in one department like that, in the same room. Mr. Zenowitz and his team reviewed special ed updates and provided professional learning focusing on the department's mission, which is newly developed. We've also maintained the in-district specialized programs while working with our staff to build capacity in those areas. We are continuing our partnership this year with Bridges to offer school-based clinical services at Law, Foreign, East Shore, West Shore, and Harborside. And we have also found when there is an elementary student in need, we've been able to partner Bridges with that particular family. That has been a rare occasion, but more recently, it's even been something that we recommend to a family. So I'm happy to say that that can occur, but I'm just not sure that the capacity of our clinical therapists at those sites would be able to handle full-blown cases or caseloads from the elementary schools. So I think that is just possibly an indicator of future need at our elementary levels. We also secured a grant from the State of Connecticut that allows us to provide quality professional learning opportunities for our paraeducators. We are bringing them training in the areas of assistive technology, behavior, and de-escalation strategies. In the area of talent management and development, you will get a full report from Ms. Kapazna this late fall and winter as well. We have hired 33 new teachers, or new to Milford, three new administrators, and 15 new paraeducators. We're in need of two additional teachers, a special ed teacher at Mathuason and a world language teacher at the middle school level. I know that changes moment by moment, and that's why I gave you a look. And seven additional paraprofessionals. And we were able to induct our new teachers through the Milford Teacher Academy. We had 24 teachers participate, and we give them opportunities to learn more about HQI, our district priorities, and curriculum development. All right, getting close to the end. In the area of digital services, we set up new hardware, new server hardware with solid state hard drives for improved performance, upgraded to the latest version of Power School, and we had a very solid portal opening. We did not hear any complaints from any parents this year logging in to find their teacher, their child's teacher, or getting their child's schedule. I think that's a first. Kudos to the biz department. What helped also was a scaffolded, scaled-out approach to when the portal opened to different levels, so that helped a bit. We configured new wireless networks to improve security. The need for cybersecurity is greater and greater, so we are constantly looking at what network hardware and software upgrades. More to come on that in the future budget, just signaling to you. We repaired and reconfigured 500 Chromebooks from graduating seniors and students that left the district, and we've configured new Chromebooks for grades kindergarten, fifth, and ninth grade, and any new students in the district. And in the area of cybersecurity upgrades, we've completed the multi-factor authentication implementation for all staff, and we've implemented a service platform to better identify external and internal threats. We've updated all our laptops and workstations to Windows 11 to accommodate Windows 10's end-of-support updates. And that is the end of my annual back-to-school report. I'm happy to take any questions from the board.
Very comprehensive questions for Dr. Khatia on that.
Mr. Kova?
It's more of a comment. I think early on, my favorite area is STEM. You talked about project-based learning.
Yes.
Is that something new that we've done, or is it being expanded?
No, I think it's a gradual expansion. So during the pandemic, we had access to a program that the state had adopted, and with the ARPA SOM money going away, we decided to roll a lot of those opportunities into our current curriculum, because our enrichment curriculum really built off of that, so.
Because at the college level, that's like, it's integral to like UConn programs. I sponsor and mentor a project team every year. And to see them go from, here's something we want you to do at the end of the school year, coming back with everything they've learned is pretty cool. And I think that hands-on thing is great.
Thank you, Mr. Kova.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Can you refresh my memory on the, you mentioned early on, Southern Connecticut State University. That's a partnership, like an ECE kind of thing?
Yes, so we've had in the goals and obviously the priorities last year to continue to expand our dual enrollment partnerships.
Right, okay, that's correct.
Southern has been a new and very welcome partnership during the last school year, and we had about six new courses that we were bringing in with instructors to build ECE opportunities.
This year, six new?
This year, yeah.
Very good, thank you. Anything else?
Thank you, Dr. Khatia.
Thank you, and I'll be turning things over to Mr. Brennan for the dispersment report.
Thank you, Dr. Khatia, Ms. Glennon, members of the board. Send your package, you will find a list of all the cash disbursements for the month of August over the amount of $1,500. At this time, I am happy to take any questions you have.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, so a quick one on line 246332, the Skyview Milford LLC about solar generation charges. Curious about, it's probably larger than this, but this is the question that I had. What's our current arrangement with that solar company? Do we lease or do we own? And the reason I ask that, I know that a lot of the federal changes have put a lot of solar companies in jeopardy and have closed and filed Chapter 11, because by the end of this year, a lot of the federal tax credits expire thanks to the president's big beautiful bill. And just curious if we own it, if we're at risk of having an orphan system, or kind of what our current solar status is.
Yes, so I've been following a little bit of that as well peripherally. My interpretation of that was more about funding for initial starting-up of, I think the main piece of that was more about like the initial launch with some reduced reimbursement rates and credits, tax credits, et cetera, for the initial install. So currently, we do have solar on all of our schools, with the exception of Harborside. So it is that leasing piece as well. But my understanding is that, you know, when those kind of things happen, there is an element of possibly somebody else servicing that. And we do have different contracts, so we do have like those different pieces of like, if a company goes out, you know, one of those next steps, right?
Okay, awesome, yeah. And I know there's, a lot of the experience I have in my day job is more the residential, the residential landscape has been turned upside down, and commercial's still not as in flux. But that, seeing that line, maybe you asked about it, just all the news stories I've heard recently.
Sure, absolutely.
And then it kind of led me to the next question I had relative to budgeting, and especially the changes in everything this year, and how it's different than previous years. And I know we'll talk about it later, but in a future meeting, we'll get closer to budgeting. But with, even just this morning, hearing, reading a story about how with the tariffs, we're at risk of losing a third of our farmers, because all their inputs have increased dramatically. Are we, have you started the process of tracking some of the materials and inputs we have in our budget, as simple as toilet paper, all the way through like the chillers and stuff? Or we started to make cost projections about what the increase in costs will be this year over last year?
Absolutely. And, you know, we have continual meetings where we look at our current budget, forecasting our future budget, looking at past budgets. So we're kind of simultaneously working in three budget cycles.
I figured, but I didn't think it'd be a hard one. I thought you'd say yes, but I felt like I had to ask, thank you.
Absolutely, and I think, you know, some of those things along with tariffs and, so there's some simultaneous things that are currently occurring. You know, there could be a tariff piece to it, but it could also just be regular inflation that we're also going through, so it's kind of hard right now to attribute one versus the other.
Right, because there's a lot of flux.
There's a lot of flux right now, but currently, and just in our regular check-ins with our different departments and looking at all the materials that we're purchasing for the school system, whether it be curriculum materials or toilet paper, as you mentioned, all the way around there, we're not seeing anything to the extent where we're prohibited from buying something with a sharp increase that caused us to say, what's happening here? So, I mean, costs are rising, as you may have seen, but we are constantly projecting those things and keeping a close eye on it.
Figured, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
So what I'm hearing you say is that you're not seeing any extreme cost fluctuations right now in that year?
Nothing to the point where, yeah.
Where you've had to put the brakes on ordering something. Okay, thank you.
A lot of our this year ordering happens like at the end of June, where the secretaries are teeing everything up, and when we say go, they hit enter, so. We're not ordering now for now.
Right, and there were a lot of companies stockpiling in the spring and summer, so it probably wouldn't hit till.
We may not know this for a couple more months.
Right.
And we also look at things like consortiums and state business, where there's prices that are already locked in for X number of months after that. So we take advantage of all those different avenues to try to find the best price available for what we're purchasing.
I figured, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions on the dispersment report? Mr. Kova?
There's one on here, I never noticed this before, but it's a charge for the fuel cell at the wastewater plant to the city of Milford for $104,000. Is that a power generation fee, is that some, or is it a?
Yeah, it's a fair cost for the energy.
Okay, okay. So just like a fee for the energy we're getting out of it?
Yes, so the energy that we're actually producing from there. So there's a few different energy sources that we have, depending upon which school it is. So we do have our regular UI electricity. Some of ours is from the microgrid generator that we have here onsite, and then there's also the wastewater treatment. So depending upon which source it's coming from, there are challenges, but when we look at what that's doing as a reduced rate.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, and we'll go to the last item, which is the Talent Management and Development Report with Ms. Kapazna.
Thank you. In my report, you have the listing of job postings, personnel recommendations, retirements, resignations, termination, and stipend appointments. I do want to point out, as Dr. Khatia pointed out in her back-to-school report, that I am pleased to report that we are down to two teaching openings at this point. One is the world language teacher at the middle school level, either in ASL or Spanish. We're kind of exploring both possibilities there. And then we have an opening for a special ed teacher at Mathuason to cover a recent resignation for a teacher who's not leaving until the end of the month. We did put out an offer for that, and unfortunately, it was not accepted. But since our last meeting, we filled the science opening at West Shore, the special ed opening at CAF Pen, and just today, pleased to announce that we filled a French position at Foreign High School, which was a blessing. We also hired a parent today, so we're still, we're looking for six pairs. That's a change from this afternoon's report. And also a .6 BCPA, and we have recently filled the 1.0 BCPA and the CODA position. So we're moving along very nicely. I just wanted to remind everyone about how quickly things change in my world. I mean, I can barely keep track of it. But the snapshot in time that you see, either on my report, on our website, or on other pages or sites, can change multiple times in a day, and especially in a week or a month. For instance, we submitted a report to the state listing our openings. They asked us, I think it was like the end of August, and while that number was 16 at that point, including teaching positions and parapositions, et cetera, the number is reduced to nine now, but it's not a straight line from 16 to nine, right? So 16 minus nine is seven. But it was 16, then four people resigned, making it, you know, 20, and then we filled 11 positions, and that leaves nine. So it kind of gives you an idea of how up and down it goes all the time. So it's never a straight line. So it's not linear, it's not easy to follow. Luckily, we are surrounded by staff that are working very hard to get these positions filled, including our administrators at the building and district level, and our TMD staff. So I kind of want to just point that out, because it's very hard to keep track of. But we're in good shape starting the year out, and we are so into the year.
Very good. Questions for Ms. Kapazna?
So I did want to point out, I did see that article. There was an article on the 16 vacancies. And it was pretty easy to go to the state website and follow through the trajectory of what was open, and to go to our report and see where we had openings of the others. Just to point out, I guess, that, you know, we are very transparent with what we're hiring. And those positions, though, the positions we're talking about right now, and the positions that have been open, had nothing to do with the reductions that we had to make to our budget last year. So the positions that were eliminated, those were not budgeted for, because they were eliminated. And the positions that we're discussing now were budgeted in our current budget, which is what the report, I think, that was the caveat of the report. You have positions that were, for teachers, that were budgeted for, and or included, you know, included currently in the budget and vacant.
They specifically asked about teaching positions, parapositions, and other, you know, school positions. But yes, obviously, that would be.
Two separate things, though.
Yeah.
Vacancies versus the reductions that we had to make.
Most certainly. Just to clarify, there are fewer teachers employed by Milford Public Schools today than last year. And one was through intentional budgeting. If you remember, the January proposed, and then the additional reductions in May. So that is not synonymous with vacancies. So we made no special ed cuts in teachers, but yet, we have a special ed vacancy. A vacancy has nothing to do with FTE reductions. The reductions we made in May were painful. There are definitely fewer sixth-grade teachers in middle There are definitely fewer sixth grade teachers in middle school today than there were back last year. And because we have contracts to follow, the FTE reductions reverberate. Say that word.
Reverberate.
Thank you. That across our system. That because the reduction was made at mostly FTEs at the middle school, it was felt all across the system. So folks equating 16 vacancies on a state report with, oh, that 1.3 didn't really make a difference in Milford Public Schools, which may or may not be a social media post right now. It has nothing to do with each other. We took a big hit. There are people not working here, sorry. There are positions no longer in this district that we had last year. And we had a little bit of a flight. People getting scared that it was going to be their job, so they went on their own and found other jobs. So we just have to be careful that we don't have too many years like that. Because then the attraction, the ability to attract teachers will start to diminish for Milford Public Schools. The reputation around you may not have a job there long will start to hurt us, not other things. So we just want to put out there that vacancies does not equal we didn't get rid of anybody. Any questions about that? Ms. Doyle?
Thank you, it's probably Ms. Kapazna most. How frequently did you put out offers and them not get accepted this year? I mean, it may be for various reasons for why people don't accept, but.
That happens every year. I don't have that number off the top of my head, I could look into it. But typically, like the one that didn't get accepted recently was somebody working in Fairfield County and we just couldn't, couldn't make that match. We tried. So, but I would say this year as compared to other years, it was.
Pretty typical.
Pretty typical for people not accepting. It's still, you know, a great place to work and people are very interested in working in Milford, so.
Mr. Smith?
So what's usually the delta between us and someone working in Fairfield County salary?
It depends, obviously, on the district. And it would go, I don't, like I know in Stratford, I think the starting pay is $7,000 more than our starting pay. I don't know that every step is $7,000 apart. I know a district like Norwalk, they'll have different, more lanes than us, which is across, you know, Masters, Masters plus 15, ours are, you know, they have just a lot more and therefore an opportunity to earn more at the top scale. But typically, we pay less than Fairfield County. I mean, that's, that's a fact.
It's difficult being right on top of Fairfield County.
For sure, but proud of being in Allen County.
Dr. Khatia, is this the first? Because we've had three years of budget battles. Obviously, the first year the budget was reinstated. And last year, there were not, my knowledge, any teacher layoffs. This was the first year, or last year, you know, the last fight. Was there a flight of teachers that happened last year as well?
You know, we were just talking about this today, Ms. Kapazna. We, it's safe to say, we haven't experienced this in my time here. This is my eighth year.
Layoff aspect of it? Correct, I've been here 20 years. And we may have laid off a couple people here, a couple people there. Never as many as this year in one fell swoop. And then people leaving, like you mentioned, there was a little bit of a flight of people.
People getting scared and therefore starting to apply for jobs and taking them.
So I did a rough, kind of a rough analysis of that. We haven't really dug in that deep. And actually, it's less than I thought it was. We've had about 45 people resign this summer. Two years ago, we had 57. And I was like, hmm. But that was the, that was prior to a brand-new contract starting. So it's very typical that, and right before a new contract starts, that you'll have some flight. So, and again, in a quick analysis out of, so actually, it's 35 this summer and then 10, because we start from seven, one, we start a new list, so it's 35 plus 10. So out of the 35, 20 people did leave for new jobs. Two people left for jobs outside of education. Two people left for personal health reasons. 10, really no reason given. One relocation. So, I mean, pretty standard reasons. But, you know, we do an exit survey. And if they want to do an exit interview with us in person, they can opt that as well. And so, you know, because somebody gets a new job in another district, you know, why were they looking is more like the next question that we need to ask. Some people might live closer to that district, which makes a lot of sense. Or their schedule aligns better with their children's schedule. But, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions on the TMD report? All right. That completes the superintendent's report, Ms. Brennan.
Thank you, Dr. Khatia. All right, so we're almost done. Consent agenda? Motion that we accept the minutes for the August 21st, 2025 special meeting, August 25th, 2025 business meeting, and August 26th, 2025 special meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Preet, seconds on the paper. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do you have any words to comment tonight? I'm glad things went well for the first day of school, the first week of school. And looking forward to a great year, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Anybody opposed to adjournment at 8:33? Hearing none, we're adjourned at 8:33. Thank you.